Okay, good evening, everyone. Council President Stanley, members of council, Mayor Cohen. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here. My name is Frank Lucchese. I'm Senior Public Affairs Manager at PSENG. With me this evening, I do have two members of the PSENG team as well. Jay Kaplan and Kendall Demijon, who will assist if we have some additional questions. Jay Kaplan will be speaking as well. So over the past year and a half, PSENG has been making significant investment in infrastructure throughout our entire service territory. So we're replacing and upgrading a lot of aging transmission infrastructure, switching and substations, our distribution network, which is the wood poles, the wood pole lines that you see in the streets that feed our customers, as well as we're replacing bare steel, cast iron mains in our service, our gas distribution network. All of this is being done to improve the reliability to our system and create a safe, reliable, redundant, and resilient network for our customers and to minimize the length of outages. In East Brunswick, we are doing all of the above. The transmission upgrades that you may be aware of is part of our MTB, which is the Matouch and Trenton Burlington project that will replace and enhance the transmission backbone from our Matouch and Switching Station in Edison through East Brunswick, ending at our Switching Station in Burlington. We will be replacing aging lattice towers with monopole systems and upgrading our service to 230 KV from its current capacity of 138 KV. We are also in the process of upgrading, in some cases, building new sub-transmission stations. Particularly here in East Brunswick, the Harts Lane Station will be upgraded in the coming year, scheduled to begin in November 2019 with an in-service date of 2022. This station is a critical station that feeds the customers here from the PSENG side of the business in East Brunswick. As we upgrade these stations, it is equally important that we upgrade the distribution network, as I mentioned before, the pole lines that serve the customers. And that upgrade is in between our stations. This includes a higher voltage connectivity between the stations and a pole replacement project that will create a network that will allow our stations to now work together, especially in the event of a major outage. We have identified some weaknesses in South Brunswick and East Brunswick, and we'll be constructing a brand-new station in South Brunswick, which we call the Melrich Station. We will need to connect the new Melrich Station to our Harts Lane Station, which is what I want to give you an overview here tonight. So I just wanted to kind of paint the picture for you of what we got going on as a company overall, the fact that we have some, you know, minor voltage issues that we're dealing with, which is why we have to construct new and upgrade existing. And in order for us to do that, there's connectivity that we're going in between the stations, which will allow those stations to now communicate. Before, really didn't have that ability to do that, but now we will. So for the Melrich to Harts Lane project, as we're eloquently calling Melrich, it will be a distribution upgrade, which will upgrade and increase the reliability of the Harts Lane Station. It'll replace the infrastructure, and that's the poles, wires, and hardware. We'll install lightning protection along that route as well. It'll give us relief from our Plainsboro Station and Dy Road. So right now, as I mentioned earlier, we have a little bit of a gap, so this is going to help relieve some of that potential overload on our Plainsboro Station, as well as give us relief on our Devils Brook Station, which is on Culver Road. So this is why we're building that Melrich facility in South Brunswick. But again, we need to connect the two. Once that's built, we have to connect it to our Harts Lane Station. So for this pole replacement project, which we're talking about tonight, it's a 69 KV project, which is planned to start in May of 2019 this year, and will take approximately 18 months to complete. There is approximately 230 poles that will be replaced in kind and like-for-like. So those poles that are currently there right now, new poles will be set, the old poles will be removed. So they will be like-for-like replacement, and the poles are taller and in larger diameter. Those poles, the current poles out there are around 45 feet. The new poles are 65 feet. However, 57 feet of that pole is what's exposed as we set those poles a little bit deeper. They are in bigger diameter as well. If you look at the handout that I gave you, if you look, I think, on the second page, second, third page, it'll give you a listing of the poles and why we do that. And the reason, councilman and mayor, that we do the higher poles, two major reasons is, A, it must conform to national safety standards, and a higher pole is needed when we're doing an increase of voltage. Currently, it's a 26 KV circuit, and that will increase to a 69 KV circuit. All right? So those, if you can see on those pole there. Also, if you can see from the handout, I provided you a route map of what the engineers are looking to accomplish when they do the connectivity between the station. The route has been engineered, and the streets that we will be working on are Church Lane, Dunham's Corner Road, Riders Lane, and Milltown Road. So those are the four roads that we'll be currently working on. Again, approximately 230 poles that we'll be working on that. So I'll kind of stop there if there's any questions before we go on to talk about a little bit of the tree. There is tree removal that has to happen. We've been working side by side with the town. Jay will come up and talk about the tree removal end of it and the trimming that is required. We have been working with your arborist in town, so it's been working very well, but we'll talk about that a little deeper. But from a technical aspect, I'll try to answer them, and by the way, our technical expert is, I'll try to do the best I can. We're obviously on storm duty tonight because of the high winds, and he's back at the shop. Actually, all of us are kind of on storm duty, but between myself and Jay, I think we can manage to answer any technical questions that you may have. So I'll stop there before I bring in our tree person.
The poles that you're going to be replacing, I mean, you're going to go to a 65-foot pole, which, as you said, would now increase to 57 feet above ground as opposed to the 45 that were currently?
Correct, yeah. So 45's out, so it'll be 57 that's exposed, because we go a little deeper with the 65-footers now. So you're going to have a net of about 12 feet difference.
Still a wooden pole?
Yes, correct. Yeah, it's all new standards.
Pressed treated?
Yeah, it's all new standards now, DEP standards.
Not a tree soap-based pole?
Yep, yep, they're right.
And then, I guess, you'll be replacing them along the same line, so they'll be in different locations now?
So, no, they won't be in different, well, they'll be next to each other, so they'll be in the same line.
Well, typically, they would end up on a property line. In the past, it would always, you know, ideally be on a property line. Now, it's going to be favoring one side or the other.
Yeah, it'll favor one side or the other. Right, it'll be still in that right-of-way, so if you got one pole set, usually goes right next to it, and so you understand the process as well, and actually, you bring up a good point. We set the new poles, transfer the services over. Sometimes you'll see, obviously, if they're poles that are co-owned, if you will, with the other utilities, that'll be with Verizon and with the cable companies, some fiber companies as well. We set the new pole, transfer the services over. When we're done transferring the services, we end up shearing the top of the pole, so sometimes they look a lot shorter, and that gives the indication, when we coordinate with Verizon and the cable companies, to then come and do the transfer, and then they end up pulling a pole. Sometimes when we put the new pole in, you'll see sometimes we build up a little dirt debris around the base. That is done because once the old pole gets pulled out, that's used to backfill the old.
If I may, typically, I know, because I'm in the development business.
Yep, so you know.
When a pole gets replaced or removed, or typically, the last one on is the guy to take it out.
Correct.
Is that still going to be the case here?
That's still the case. We do coordinate with Verizon on that.
Usually Comcast or somebody else is the slow one?
Yeah, yeah.
Then we end up looking at a pole for a long time, because they typically don't, do we have a way to put pressure on your company to make certain that these things get done in an expedited fashion, at least the removals?
Councilman Lindell, I have Frank's number on speed dial.
Which he does.
I could use that.
Also, I'd like to thank him for today, the poles that came down on Riders Lane, though please call them right away, which was great. My next call was to Frank, and he got the crews out there pretty quickly. So I'd like to just thank you in public for doing that.
To that, Joe, I was going to say, he shouldn't be here. He should be out there on the pole, maybe we could open the road.
I give them all the credit out there. Our crews work very hard.
I've worked with Frank for many years, and he knows I'm tenacious, and I will keep bugging them until we get those poles resolved.
That's a bigger part of my concern, is getting the old poles out, because I know that that can be, you know, especially when you guys chop the top and all that, you know, it can be a time-consuming process.
And you're exactly right. Usually, the cable company is the last guy off, and they're not too quick to remove.
No, no. They'll get off and then we'll pull that off.
Well, I was going to say, we've been doing a good job coordinating with Verizon to go, and again, it's, as we start to replace a lot more poles, it does create a little bit of a backlog for them to help keep up with that, but we do, I think, a pretty good job trying to get them as we coordinate the new projects moving forward.
Currently, I see, at least over the past week, I don't know if anybody else has noticed it, I don't know, Dunham's Corner Road, there has been line work going on, not by your company, maybe by, it looked like a third party was doing the work, adding to those poles.
Adding to ours?
It looked like they were putting, looked like they were putting a new, you know, or replacing a line that's on those poles.
Yeah, they could be replacing some lines that haven't done, and none of this 69 KV work has been done yet. I'm not sure what's going on and done.
It's not you. It's definitely either a cable or...
I wonder if it's a fiber company, perhaps. Could be fiber.
You know, so they're out placing fiber on that pole, and they're going to have to replace it next year or whenever, when you're doing this work.
Yeah, we'll transfer it over. Sometimes Verizon will do it for the cable company. What's interesting is we got two unions that deal with that pole. We're the IBW, and the Verizon and the cable company are the communication workers, and they can kind of work their own, you know, together. They can't touch our stuff, we can't touch theirs, so that's where a lot of the...
One last question I have, that's related to house line services on these poles. If there's underground services or anything going to a pole, that gets all done?
Taken care of.
Homeowners have no responsibility for anything?
No responsibility.
You'll notify the homeowners that there's going to be an interruption in service or whatever?
I will, and that's great. I will talk about our outreach. We're very proactive on our outreach. I have some material for you guys. I'll kind of close with that, but yes.
Similarly, I guess, when transformers are, because I assume there's transformers on a number of these poles as well.
Correct.
When transformers are transferred, there'll be enough indication to the residents that something's going to happen in two or three days.
Yes. So any lights, transformers, drop-down services to the homeowners, all that is taken care of by us.
And the Cobra heads are going to be just moved?
Just, they'll be replaced.
Or are we changing them while we're out there doing the work? Are we changing them to a more efficient?
Well, so it's interesting, the, so we're going through a process right now of an energy efficiency filing and looking at more of, more energy-efficient lighting such as LED, but right now, if it's the updated light, it will be just, you know, taken from one pole off to the other. If it's an older light, which most of the older lights, the old sodium lights are out now, so we're replacing those.
Yeah, I just didn't know we were going to go, you know, while we're handling them, if there's an ability to change them all to the LEDs, you know?
Yeah, hopefully, we get that energy efficiency filing, go, we'd love to get the whole area done in LED for sure.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Following up on his question, you said third-party vendor is responsible for removing the poles. Is it just the shared poles or all the poles?
So it's the shared pole. So we have a shared pole agreement with Verizon, so we're both on it, and that's the agreement that we have. We transfer first, they go second, and it's 99.9% of the time, it's Verizon who's pulling the pole. If it's just our facilities on there and nobody else, we'll pull the pole.
So how many, percentage-wise on this route, how many shared poles are there?
Jay, you happen to know?
I know the percentage, but I think it's all about the bottom.
Yeah, I would say the lion's share of them or Dunham too. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one question, sort of following up on what Jimmy, you said, you might have said you were going to say it later, but how will the residents know when you're transferring? Are you going to do it via the phone, via a letter?
So, no, it's a great, it's a great question. So Kendall Demijon, who's here, she does our public outreach, and that's something we've been doing very proactively on all our projects, and I have a copy of the letter. Actually, some of the residents have received a letter for the work that's upcoming, but we do it in a variety of ways, and we do it well in advance of the project. So we'll do, she physically walks door-to-door with the door knockers and the letter that's inside of there. We do mailings, which I got a copy of that as well, and I do have a copy of the door knocker. We work with Mr. Crisculo and staff on Nixle calls, Veroli calls. We offer workshops, you know, and then we give you information. We actually have a website dedicated to all the work we have, and there will be, there'll be one dropdown dedicated to East Brunswick, so residents can actually drop down and look at the work that's being done, roads that are completed, you know, they're high, all color-coded and everything, so we do all that. On that letter, there's an 800 number that a resident can call, and that number actually goes right to Kendall, and within a 24-hour period, she'll return that call to the resident if they have any questions, concerns, comments. Again, Jay will come up and talk about tree trimming as well and removals, but yeah, we have a whole proactive packet. I don't know if you want, if we can, if you're just going to take a quick look, this is a copy of the letter, if you just want to look and pass it down from there. Just one of the example letters that we use, actually, Kendall, that one was for this project, right? So this is the actual letter that went out to the residents.
When do you see that it's going to happen? Like, do we know, like, approximate dates or anything like that?
Yeah, how far in advance? Come on, you can come on.
It's usually seven to 10 days prior to start of construction, I'll do the notification. So depending upon, yeah, sure. So depending upon, I usually do an intro letter, just to kind of establish the project, what we plan on doing, that kind of thing, the duration of the project. At any time there's an update, if there's a change in construction hours, or if we're going to be working Saturdays, things like that, we would do a Veroli, just so that the residents can get updated information. But we always drive them to the 1-800 number, because it does get back to me. And we've gotten some calls back from residents already saying, hey, I have a pole that's closer to the front of my yard, can you guys potentially move it over? So we're working through those requests as well.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. How are you doing?
Thank you. Okay. Any other basic, okay, good, councilman.
Would you kindly review for the residents what you mentioned briefly about lightning protection?
Yes, so on the top of the poles, and again, some of the reason why we go higher is because of the higher voltage, and when we get to that higher voltage level, you'll see at the very top of the pole, we end up putting lightning protection on there, just to protect, A, to protect our equipment, but obviously, you know, creates a grounding mechanism for the, you know, for the system. So we do do that on the top, small, right, Jay, how do you usually tall? They're not that big that go on the top. You know, height-wise, I'm not 100% sure, but it's not a long, big lightning mass, it's just lightning protection that we add.
Because in my neighborhood, that has been the source of the problem spanning, let's say, let's just use the last 10 years, it's been, it's been a lightning strike.
Yeah.
The service that you provide in my neck of the woods is outstanding, and I do want to compliment you from the dais on that. But the lightning, because it could affect not only the infrastructure of what you're talking about, but it could affect people who live close by, especially if you're going an additional 20 feet, right? You're going up to 65, or you're going to 57, so you're comfortable sharing with our community that everything is safe on that.
Correct, yes, yes. And I know when we brought the station upgrade, I know we're talking more about the 69 KV, which is the pole relocation project, but we're actually upgrading Harts Lane Station as well, which is really the critical station here in East Brunswick. And, you know, after Superstorm Sandy, we had, you know, we got exposed on some issues that we had, you know, I think everybody, you know, a lot of our infrastructure got exposed to an element like that, and, you know, addressing the upgrade, the upgrade and the need to upgrade the station of Harts Lane was critical. So I know when we brought the project to Joe, just to do a preliminary overview, and that's what we like to do a lot, we'll bring it into administration, get your eyes on it, take a look at it, comment on it, and kind of build off of that, but I think it was a relief that we're going to start really working on upgrading the reliability and the resiliency to that station, because it's only going to benefit the customers and your residents. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll bring Jay up, we'll talk a little bit about the trimming that's involved.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so in conjunction with the pole replacements, since there are bigger poles and it's a higher voltage, we need additional clearance from the trees. Trees are the number-one reason for outages nationwide, not necessarily at PSENG, I just want to point that out. But it is the reason nationwide, so it is, it is an issue. This is going to include larger clearances on the trees and a lot of removals as well. Now, for the removals, we are replacing the trees that we remove. If the, if it's a privately-owned tree, we're working with the property owner to decide what kind of tree they would like. If they want it in the same general area, it has to be utility-friendly, so something that doesn't grow too tall, preferably 25, 30 feet, so dogwoods, red buds, hawthorns, lilacs, those kind of trees will be acceptable. We are riding, we've ridden the route, actually, with, I'm going to say his last name wrong, so I'm going to apologize now, Russ Bacinski, who's the town arborist. We've ridden the route with him, and we've reviewed all of the municipally-owned trees. The ones that we're going to remove, we're going to replace. We'll work with Russ to decide where they go. Again, same thing, if they're going to be in the same general area, they'll be utility-friendly. Also, not every resident who we remove a tree for wants a replacement. So in that case, we will be giving the town that replacement tree, so the town won't be down any trees. So if a resident says, I want the tree gone, but I don't want a replacement, I'm tired of cleaning up leaves or acorns, or whatever the reason may be, we'll give that tree to the town. We've done a lot of our notifications already, and we have 18 of those so far. So 18 extra trees will be going to the town for y'all to decide what to do with. Yeah?
If I may, council president. Sure. I guess you've been working on Milltown Road lately, because I hear chip trucks going. I know you do, Sharon, it's close to your house. The one thing I would urge, if we're going to take a tree out of a curb strip, what we typically do in new developments is push them back, you know, the replacement trees get pushed back behind the sidewalk, and I would like to see that we could urge people to do that. I mean, I know you're getting more out of the township right-of-way and more onto residents' properties, but it gets away from the problem of heaving sidewalk or even interfering with the lines, and you guys end up coming through, you know, every two, three years and chipping up a tree, chewing up a tree just so you can get your, you know, proper clearances. So, you know, I'm sure that that's something that Mike Greisner would be, you know, pushing to do, and he's spoken about it numerous times, and I'm sure Keith and everybody else. We're getting, we're getting our engineering staff and everybody else involved with this?
Yeah, when we met with Mr. Lucchese and his entire team, there was probably a dozen of them there that day, we went over those exact items, about tree replacement, trimming, if people want them, don't want them, the whole door. We spent well over two hours discussing.
I think personally, we all, as much as we possibly can, would like to see the street trees, because it does provide nice cover and shade for the, for the streets. I would just like to, you know, see that we urge the residents to take them back, and if, when we do replace them, urge them to have them behind the sidewalk line so that we can have them away from an area that's going to cause heaving sidewalks and all the other problems that are encountered.
Yeah, that's no problem. We'll, obviously, it's their property.
Of course.
So we'll have to get the okay from them, so as long as they agree with it, that's no problem. It's fine by us, it's all the same to us, really.
And you're replacing them with a, what size caliper tree?
Oh, typically, it's two to two-and-a-half inch. We don't really like to go any smaller than that.
Right.
We do go up to three, three-and-a-half, if we can't find anything in two-and-a-half inch caliper. The tree plantings will be done in two different planting seasons, both the spring and the fall. There's just too much work to be done in one season.
You wouldn't be placing watering bags on them or anything like that?
Oh, we'll place gator bags, and we'll give it the initial watering. After that, it'll be up to either the town or the resident to take care of the tree. Yeah, so they'll get the gator bag, and then the town keeps those after we're done.
So the people on Milltown Road were already informed with letters like the ones, like the letter?
Yes, so they were mailed the letter, and they were also notified. So tree trimming does its own separate notification on top of the construction, because we usually go in first, so they can actually set poles. So they've all received a door card, and they've all been talked to.
And I guess the pink ribbons, if I'm not mistaken, are the ones that are getting?
Yeah, so, yeah. So we don't like to spray-paint trees in the beginning until we have actually talked to a customer, because you can't take the spray paint off like you can a ribbon. So once we've talked to the customer, we'll take the ribbon off and put a little red dot on the base to notify removal, but we won't do that until we've actually talked to them. Yeah. Yeah?
While you're doing this section of town, are you looking into any other sections for tree removal? Because I've noticed a lot of lines with a lot of heavy leaning trees on them, so...
Yeah, so actually, we've been working with Russ. He's been pointing out locations and some trees that he would like to see gone, and while we're working in town, we're going to work with him to get rid of those, those trees as well. Particularly near the corner of Dunham Corners Road and Riders, there are several trees not involved in the project that have been, they've been trimmed over the years, and they look pretty terrible, to be honest with you. There's no getting around it. He asked if we would be willing to remove those and replace, and we agreed to, so, you know, but there's some other trees as well. That's just one example.
Probably got a bunch of ash trees.
Yeah, actually, thanks for bringing that up. If it is an ash tree, we're just automatically removing it. There is no trimming of ash anymore, so.
Absolutely. With the ash boards.
Yeah.
That's anywhere in town, or?
No, just along the route, but if...
Nice try.
But we, we've talked to Russ, and we've offered assistance, so if there is an ash near the power lines, if it's not along the route, we'll help remove it, so, yeah.
Okay.
But we're not going to remove every ash, sorry. Any other questions for tree trimming?
No.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think, I think that's my story, and I think I'm going to stick to it, but I want to echo council president and members of council, obviously, Mayor Cohen. We got a fantastic working relationship with East Brunswick. We sincerely appreciate all your support, working with Joe, and I know he echoed it before, but we communicate very well together. He does have me on speed dial, trust me. And, but we communicate well together, members of your public works, Keith Kip, just very, very open, and, you know, we figure things out. You know, there's always give and take, but I sincerely appreciate the relationship that we have with, with East Brunswick, sincerely, but it's, it is a pleasure working with the town. So anytime you need updates on any projects, obviously, I give, Joe, I always try to give him information that he can post or have available in case he gets calls, and obviously, Mayor, you get the calls from the constituents, but we always try to keep on top of that as well.
Fantastic. So one last question, same, same, in line with what I asked the other gentleman. Being that you're working on this project here, have you surveyed any of the places in East Brunswick that might need replacement or in need of replacement, or do you have any future projects or things going on where you're going to come back into town to take care of other areas of need within East Brunswick?
Are you talking electric or gas or both?
Electric.
Yeah, electric, you know, it's always, right now, that's what's, this is what's been approved. There's always, there's always projects on the drawing board. We have to go through, like anything else, an approval process with the Board of Public Utilities before we expend any funds on that, but as we start to develop the station, the whole idea is really to interconnect them, and as it's just kind of, just kind of free-flowing through the process, and as we do that, then the routes are designed to, like I mentioned before, interconnect those. So right now, that's what we have on air. We do have a gas project that is, that we sat and met with. We'll have some areas, you know, quite a bit of areas in town that will be seeing their bare steel and cast iron, old cast iron mains, although working very well, they're just, they've reached their, their age limit, so we'll be replacing them with high-efficiency plastic. That's a process that'll go on, but again, we've been working with the town, just, you know, from a notification process and a preparation. That's not 100% set yet. We have an idea of where we're at, the streets, but once we get that all wrapped up, it's probably going to start sometime in the, in the mid-spring. But yeah, anytime we have projects like that, we do it. And by the way, you mentioned about trees before. We do, just our division, who manages the East Brunswick on a daily basis, they do have a cycle that they go around and do, do trimming on their own when it's not project-related. So there is a four-year cycle that they go on, and they, they do a lot of the tree trimming So, there is a four-year cycle that they go on, and they do a lot of the tree trimming around the area.
Excuse me, Council President.
Sure.
You mentioned the gas, and you're not really 100% certain as to where you're going with that, but it's going to start sometime in the spring.
We have, I mean, we have...
Would we, would you be coming back and just making a presentation like this to council and let us know?
If you'd like me to come back, not a problem at all.
You know, I think information to the residents and letting people know that there's improvements coming to the town, not only those affected residents, you know, that are affected by it being their neighborhood, but we realize so many roads in East Brunswick are cut-through roads. I think it would be wise that we just did a little session like this on the gas upgrade as well.
And what we normally do, and we've done it here in East Brunswick before, we did do a gas project prior to this, but we had a public workshop that we invite, you know, members of the public in the area that are going to do it, but if you want me to come back to council and talk about that as well, I don't have an issue with that.
And to that point, though, is there any way, and I'm asking Joe, but we can get EBTV to just cut this segment of this meeting, and we can get it up on Facebook, or YouTube, or the township website, so that people can be understanding, that other council people can share it on their page, so that everybody knows what's actually going on?
I just got the thumbs up.
You know, just because, people may want to watch the whole meeting, but if we just had this as a segment that we could share and put out there, I think it'd be a good...
No problem, no problem. We have done some gas work before. We had some work in 2017. We did a decent amount in town. The proposed work is double the size, but, yeah, no problem at all. Yeah, I'll coordinate that, Joe, through you.
Is this in conjunction, the gas work, is this in conjunction with all the individual home meters that are being changed also at PSENG?
So, when we do, so, when we do do the main replacement, we also replace all the service laterals that go to each of the homes, so they get brand-new service that goes to there, and it's all a high-pressure system, so now they can get energy-efficient appliances. From a safety perspective, it's fantastic, because it shuts down a lot quicker than a man, and does not allow water to penetrate it, which is really what drives the gas people crazy. Trees drive the electric people crazy, water drives the gas people crazy, so they'll get all new services. Now, when we do do the services to the homes, we're not digging up their property, the pipe is actually, the plastic pipe is actually smaller, and gets inserted through the existing service feed that goes to the property. If they're, if they do have a meter that's on the inside of the house, it is now, from a safety standpoint, you know, the board has given the authority to remove those meters and put them on to the outside of the property, and we work with the property owners on that, usually right where the gas comes in. If the meter was there, it just kind of goes on the outside now, but we're not tearing up anybody's lawn.